All right, welcome everybody. We're going to call our meeting to order for the regular meeting for the City Council of the City of Perry, August nineteenth, twenty twenty four, and then with roll call.
Coffee.
Here.
Plutso.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Calder.
Here.
Ruff.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Wether.
Here. All right, we have quorum, and tonight our invocation is made by Pastor Ron Pike.
Thank you, Mayor, for inviting me back, and I thank you all for your service. Let's bow our hands. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for a good summer. It's hot, but we're getting toward the end of it. We've had timely rains, a little more wind and hail than we wanted, but thank you for the community spirit and the leaders that come together and clean up and get things done. So we thank you what you're doing in our community for the wonderful camaraderie and cooperation that we enjoy, and pray for your continued spirit to lead and guide us and direct us for the service of these folks. So bless them this evening and give them discernment and direction, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen?
Thank you, Ron. And also, how are things going with Chris?
Good. Well, I was here at the beginning of June, and I kind of talked about the Sabbath rest we get during June and July, but the Sabbath is over. So we have backpack blessings. Shay's one of our deacons. We have a great group of deacons, and, boy, they got busy in July getting ready for backpack blessings, and we were able to serve two hundred and forty-five kids and give away backpacks full of school supplies, and then we bagged about a hundred bags after that and gave it to the schools, so tried to be a blessing to them, so that was fun. Personally, I had three new grandbabies over the summer, so that was fun. And Mother's Day Out starts tomorrow, our Wednesday evening programs start up first Wednesday of September. We finished this, well, for this year, we're at our average of seventy-one, and we're growing, slowly growing, so we're excited about that, and good things going on, so, yeah, we're doing great.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for all you guys do for the kids and the backpack blessings.
Thank you all for all your help, the United Fund, and, yeah, it's a community effort, as we all know, so God bless y'all. Thank you. You are welcome.
Thank you, Ron.
You bet. Have a good evening.
You too. All right, so let's begin with item number one, our consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Okay, second. Roll call.
Coffee.
Yes.
Plutso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calder.
Yes.
Ruff.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Wether.
Yes. All right, item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to items on the city agenda for citizens presenting their concerns or comments. I believe we had anything tonight? Right along. Item number five, propretations, commendations, reports, and inquiries by the governing body. We don't have any propretations, but we do have commendation for tonight. So yesterday, Nate and I had the opportunity to be judges for the diving contest over at the city pool as they're closing this summer, and we wanted to recognize our first-place diving champion from the contest. And so with that, we do have this to present. It says, "First place diving champion, the City of Perry's twenty twenty-four municipal contest. On behalf of the City of Perry, I send my heartfelt congratulations to Kayden Donovan for his remarkable performance in this year's first annual municipal diving contest held on Sunday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Among over twenty-five talented divers, Kayden distinguished himself with skillful flips and spins, earning first place in the competition. His dedication, talent, and sportsmanship have made our community proud, and we celebrate Kayden's outstanding achievement and look forward to his continued success." So congratulations to Kayden Donovan, who's here this evening. Keep up the incredible work. On behalf of the City of Perry, Oklahoma. And so Kayden, we're going to give you this, but we're going to hold on to it because we're going to have everybody here sign it, and then we'll give it to you. Kayden, you want to tell us about what it was like diving in the contest? Maybe? Were you nervous?
A little bit, yeah.
A little bit? How about right now?
Yeah.
Kayden's been in gymnastics for about six years, and is a two-time state gymnastics champion, so he took that into the diving contest, so he showed.
When we said that he was doing flips and spins, I mean, he was impressive, the things that he was doing off the diving board. And we also have Shay Boucher and Zoe, who's been representing the YMC that partnered with us this year with the pool, and that put together the activities on this final date. Shay, you having any thoughts? We're excited that you guys did that.
Yes, first of all, I was a judge as well.
That's right.
For, and we did know about his gymnastics, and we took that into account, just a little harder, so congratulations on that. I wanted to thank the council for the opportunity to manage the pool this summer. We are grateful. We felt like we were able to serve the community in a way that we have not before. And Zoe was at the pool every day, I wasn't. I may be a little more sad than she is that the pool was closed. But thank you for taking a chance on this, the city, Nate, you guys were great to work with. And so I believe we're meeting on Friday to kind of just do a review and see what we learned from it, so thank you.
Thank you, Shay. Kayden, thank you. We'll get this to you. Probably bring it by your house maybe tomorrow. All right, so council reports. Word one. Gloria? Okay. Word two.
I haven't heard a lot, but at the Cruz main, I've heard some good things about it this weekend, so I just wanted to draw out a good job to, a good job well done to Main Street.
Yeah, that was a great turnout. Everybody get a chance to go, and there's a lot of folks out there. That event is one that's been growing and growing each year, so I'm excited to see what they do next year as well. Joe? All right, word three, Randy?
The only thing I had was I had a couple of constituents say they were having trouble finding the council minutes on the new website. Is it an operator error?
I just thought people have some one video. We're still trying to get some of that stuff recovered.
Are they looking for the most recent ones?
I think so. That's what I assume.
That may just be because I haven't gotten a little bit of time for it yet.
Yeah, there's always a little lag just on the minutes. I mean, they can find the video.
Right.
Right, and that's always available. But the minutes is what they're looking for.
Just have to go to YouTube or manual.
And then? Sammy?
Yeah, I had one person complain about streetlights on Wakeville, and it's at dark when people walk, can't see when you come around the curb. So it's between Fifteenth Street and Park Lane. Come around that curb, people are walking, and I'm just concerned about how dark it was and getting hit.
Is there a street light there?
There's, I drove it, so there is streetlights, but it's a gap, so it's right around that curb where it's dark.
Oh, so there's not lights out, there's just no poles on that section?
Right, yeah, so it's just really dark right there where people walk, so that's all I had.
Drop that.
Yeah. I mean, that'd be a longer-term project, but I'll make note of that for sure.
Okay. All right, so our committee reports. Green, you guys have any thoughts? Hospital, if we heard anything about the hospital?
They opened bids this last week. I've heard specifically about the, I've been working on the abatement, the asbestos abatement, so we're working through that right now, trying to figure out if the grant will cover the full cost or if we're going to have to pay a little bit out of pocket, but still don't have an answer there. That's really the latest that I have on it.
Are they still on track for September?
Yeah.
And zoning?
Meeting next month.
Okay. I think that's, I don't think we're going to miss one. All right, let's move right along. Item number six, city manager remarks on current projects and activities.
Yeah, so I have just a couple of things. A reminder from last week, I brought this up, Stonehill addition, which is the thirty-three properties just up in the south of Easy Drill. The city currently does not have an electric or utility agreement with that developed, so I've had probably three people reach out to me and say, hey, when is the city getting utilities here? And I have to keep saying, we don't know yet, we're still working through that. So just be aware of that when you're buying, that we don't have any kind of agreement in place currently.
And that is outside of city limits?
It is, yeah. It is, and it's something that we would like to provide utilities to, but there are some complications that need to be worked through first. We are meeting with them this week on Wednesday to talk through some of that, to see what we can come up with, but apparently, like I said, we have nothing in place. That's a reminder there. The other thing I wanted to talk about is, I talked with Jim Davis this last week about limb pickup. His guys have been, as they've been going around with trash, they've been picking up limbs as they have the time to do so. I think we've crossed everybody off the list that we had, so if you have limbs from this last storm that have not been picked up, reach out to City Hall so we can get your name on a new list to give to David Sanderson. I think those are the only things I wanted to talk about, except for, actually, now that I think about it, there was a mislabel on number ten tonight, so I didn't mean to talk a little bit about it right now. So we have an intern who, what's his name, Chrissy, it's Sam Altman, who mislabeled this, asked Derek if you didn't get that joke.
Oh, that's weird.
Twice in a row, and he just slapped him dead.
Anyway, so I, yeah, I mislabeled this tonight, so we can't talk in depth about it, but I did meet with the ground road this last week. David Payne was there, very helpful with these discussions. They talked about the design phase, which is phase two of getting the overpass on FER, and how the federal government subsidizes that by eighty percent, but they still think that the cost will be about eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which we would have to pay twenty percent of that, but the BNSF said they would be willing to pay fifty percent, so we'd have to pay ten percent of that, which is still eighty-six thousand dollars. So my recommendation is that we wait until next year, that we save up and do that. I asked them if that would be an issue in terms of funding and things like that, and they said no. So that's kind of where we're at with that. I know we can't really discuss it, but I've talked to a couple of you offline, and you can give me your thoughts. But, yeah, I apologize, I was supposed to be on for tonight, but I mislied. We're not buying the train depot. That was not the goal of this. It's about the overpass, so.
So the bullets are all correct?
Yeah.
Heading is correct.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So I think that's all I have.
Since we can't really talk about it, can you provide a further date or another date more about the September twenty-third deadline?
Yes, yeah, we'll talk about it. I'll, we'll put it on the next council meeting.
All right, is that all you got for us, Nate?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for Nate? All right. Item number seven, our CFO report on July twenty-third, financials.
Well, guys, we've started out the year, and as always, when we start out the year, it's kind of hard to give you a whole trend on exactly what's happening, so we'll talk real quickly, just kind of through some on-top numbers and things that probably the public can you all don't see inside here that we didn't tell you about. Overall, we'll talk about PCA. Our PCA adjustment for the fourth time out of six months was a negative number, so we're down again, meaning that we built into our base utility rate enough hostel costs that we actually get in credit when we compare that back to the hostel electric bill. So it's good for us, you know, I mean, this was back to what I've always done, was Earl's desire is that we see as many negatives as we see positives, and neither one of them have a big flux, and so he would be, again, really happy with this calculation and the way the numbers are falling out related to that. Number two, CPI. We always talk about what was inflation in those numbers. Second month in a row, our inflation is coming in at about two point seven percent, so we're still under that three percent number. I gave this presentation the other day, and Bryce chimed in and said, well, what was it back under Trump's regime? And so, yeah, I had to go back and run that number, and yes, it was about one point six was the average of his, so in Bryce's words, we're still not down to that number, but two point seven is a whole lot better than those eights and nines that we were talking about in prior years, and even the four and a half subsides that we had earlier this year. So that is, we are in a much better spot as far as that goes. Sales tax, sales tax collections for year-to-date were up about ten percent over prior year. The number that's way up as far as collections go, and you'll actually see that this is included in August, numbers were up almost thirty-two percent in use tax. So, you know, it equates to about a thirteen percent increase for us. We know that the majority of that is driven from those construction pieces that we have going on, which is good. We let's see some construction and buying things, and so we will continue, and we should continue to see that increased numbers over our budget, because when we budget those pieces, we've always tried to factor out. I.e., last year, you remember how we always talked, we were down fifteen and eighteen limp, and it was because of the prior year construction. So we had a construction year, last year we didn't have any construction, this year we've got a couple of big construction projects going on, so that will make a difference as we get into the rest of the year. If you're looking at your total reports, I'm not going to read all the numbers to you, those highlights, the other income under general government that was extremely higher was we had about three hundred and twenty thousand dollar CBT grant money that got deposited, from last year's expenditures, got deposited in this year. That's why you see that number is up so much, so it was some grant funds that came in, we got those awarded. The other number that's off just a little bit, you'll see two numbers down under the economic development piece, you'll see the monthly collections were only ten thousand dollars, but we had, the August collections are up over, and it's almost thirty thousand dollars, there's a late payments, a couple of late payments that we received. So what I put on there, and what you'll see, is a twenty-one thousand dollar number for the year-to-date. The reason being is that I, we kind of went back and averaged those, so that, I know you guys, I've always told you seventeen thousand dollars is our number, whenever that was ten, I was like, no, that's a tad bit misleading, because it did get positive, it's just showing up on the August reports as far as that goes. So, again, everything looking good as far as that piece. On the PMA side, as we look at those numbers, the one thing that I would tell you, you know, utility revenues right now, based on seasonality and based on where we would expect to be, you know, we want to be at that ten to eleven percent of electric and water sales. You'll see that our electric sales are actually over, I mean, they're at eleven, we've got our water sales coming in at that ten percent, so we're right on line with seasonality of what we would expect to be collecting for our utilities, so the rest of that is really just fallout of those expenses and those pieces. Other than that, I don't have anything else to share. This month, like I said, it's kind of early on, so it's not like I can give you just this great diet drive of all these trends that are already happening in the numbers and what we expect to happen, but it is good to know that sales tax is up this year, and we should carry a pretty, a good, positive number as far as sales taxes goes, I think, through the whole year. Fifty, sixty thousand dollars, you know, if the construction, the total construction gets completed and those numbers come in, we shouldn't be up about that much for the year of what we've actually ventured to start out with. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Russ. All right. Item number eight, discussion with Melanie McGuire concerning her contract as a grant writer.
So maybe I can start by giving just a little background while she comes up. So Melanie approached me several months ago and suggested that she could do some awesome work for the city in terms of grant writing and obtaining funding through other opportunities, and I agreed with her, but it took us some time to kind of look and say, okay, what would make sense in terms of numbers, and we wanted to get our budget in place first so we could see, like, if we could match her skills with any of those items on the budget. After doing that, we saw that it made sense, we applied for a Malzahn grant, which we received, and so that's what brings us here.
Yeah. So like Nate said, him and I have been discussing several opportunities to help out the city. Grant identification and grant writing is one thing that I would love to be able to do with you guys. I had the opportunity to look through some of the budget needs for this year and for years in the future, along with some other projects, so I know that might be coming up at the pipeline, and so I just plan to work one-on-one with Nate and look at different grants, see if those apply for, and hopefully we can get the ball rolling, that's the deal, so we hope to do it.
Yeah, so ultimately, there's no action required on your part, where this is under, the consulting agreement is under the limit that you set for me last council meeting, but we did want to make you aware that she's going to be starting, you know, this coming week, and so we're just excited to have her, and just, you know, wanted to give her a chance to let you know and see if you guys have anything you wanted to talk about with her.
Is there any questions, or? Yes, well, I'm excited for the opportunity.
Yeah, I think we're all excited, and I'm just trying to plan out some of that we kind of mentioned and talked about a little bit, having, finding that grant writer position, I think that's huge, I think it's going to be good.
Thanks a lot.
All right. Item number nine, receive training from Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group.
Very appreciated.
David and Bill, take it away.
Thank you very much. I got a couple of observations. My name's Bill Tykem with Omag. Come over to the dark side, haven't you? You know, a young man stood up and embarrassed and didn't have much say, and everybody laughed, and what he, what we know and what he doesn't know is we all used to be his age, know exactly what he's thinking and feeling, you know? He don't know that yet, but he'll, he'll get there eventually. And so, Nate, appreciate, do we have a name, or is there a lottery? How's the young one getting named?
He's doing good, yeah, Clark.
Clark? Is that a placeholder? Is that the one we're going with? I didn't know if you were going with that, or?
I know you hoped that I'd go with Bill, but?
Well, Bill's, you know, Bill's taken, but for a modest fee, you could rent it probably for a while. I'm sure knew how to make this thing work. Here we go. What, Nate, what Clark weigh in at?
He was seven pounds, four ounces.
Seven pounds, four ounces. I like you pretty sure about that.
Yep, super sure.
Super sure about that?
At least right now, yeah.
Well, I was remembering his last weight at the dock. He's now eight pounds, four ounces, so.
Growing fast. Just like his dad.
Just don't forget the birthdays, all right? Don't forget the birthday.
I thought, I thought maybe some of my superpowers had improved. Usually, I have to stand up and begin speaking before the room clears out, and they got up and left a little earlier than normal. We've been here before, but most of you all weren't here. Who was, who was on the council the last time we were here? You were, okay, we'll have a lot of questions for you. And you were in the audience. What a fascinating person to visit with, knows about Perry, I'm telling you. So Omag is your insurance company, we are not an insurance company, we're Title Seventy-four Interlocal Cooperative Act Agency, and I say that, I get my per diem paid, so we always start off with that. Title Seventy-four is a real simple law, it says whatever Perry can lawfully do by itself, you can find a partner, do it with them. So y'all are electric town, are you guys OMPA, GRDA? OMPA? So it's kind of like OMPA. OMPA is an authority, and they got authorized by state statute back in, I think, eighty-one or something like that. We got started June first of nineteen seventy-seven, we're a public risk pool, probably specialty companies like maybe Hoteliers or some other people, they cool their similar risk, and so there's public risk pools all over the country. We are only created, owned, and governed by cities and towns in Oklahoma, so we only operate in Oklahoma, and we only serve cities and towns, municipalities, and we got started with- And we got started with Chalk Town, the village, all those years ago, and from those two towns, we have 500 cities and towns that belong to us. And so you guys get your liability, property, work, comp, coverage from us. And since, since we're member-owned and member-governed and member-driven, we like to return value back to our members to address the risk exposures that you guys have, you know? And so as we do that, you know, we have programs for police and for public works and we have a lot of scholarships for mayor's conference, Clark's Treasurers training, City Management Association training. OML Conference is coming up in three weeks or so over in Tulsa. You all should go if you can.
We've got two slated to go some.
Two?
Yep, trying to get one more.
Okay. Should we just wait right now till one volunteer?
You could.
All right. You guys think about going. It's a, it's a really good event and even if you come back and you go, "Well, I don't remember what David taught in his session," good networking and that's a real valuable thing. So the things that cost O-MAG money are things downstream from what you all do. You guys make policies, you allocate resources, and then you hire folks like your attorney and your judge and your manager and you say, "Okay, you guys are the administrative folk and we're the policy folk." And so as we looked, we had lots of, lots of programs and, and training and equipment for police and public works and everything, but what did we have for you folks that served around the horseshoe? And there wasn't a lot. And so our late CEO, John Woods, knew David Weatherford and David began becoming a municipal attorney in 1988. Now, it's going to be really easy for you to remember, that's the year before Taylor Swift was born. So he's been out it a while. Do you have as much money as Taylor Swift? No. Not yet? Okay, all right. So David went to Oklahoma State University and he went to the University of Tulsa Law School. And so he has served as municipal attorney, doesn't have as many communities as Bryce has, but he's currently the city attorney for Colma and Mounds and Manford and Sand Springs and soon to be Disney, about here, maybe over there by Grand Lake. But we got together with David because we thought, "Okay, what's available for you guys around the horseshoe?" Now, by law, you have to go to training one time during your tenure. It's a newly elected officials training. We don't fuss with that. That's, that training's fine, but we use David's model to bring the training to you onsite so you don't have to travel. And unlike schools, which have one form of government, and counties, which has one form of government, there's basically five forms of government in municipalities. Now, it's not really true, there's four, but if you have a charter, I call it four and a half, almost five. And so when you go to the newly elected officials training, you might be sitting next to somebody that's a completely different form of government and you might come back and say, "Hey, I had a sandwich with Fred and over there in Fredville, they do it this way." Well, that's because there's a completely different form of government over in Fredville than in Perry, America. And so we felt like the best way to bring training to you to address the risk exposures that you guys have cooled with other cities and towns to address was to come to you and bring David's training. All of this is a material that David has come up with and I used to say David was O-MAG's partner, but he's really part of the family after all these miles that we sit behind the windshield. We think the best-run cities and towns have fewer claims and the claims they have cost less money to resolve, and so that's why we come and do this. You need to know what's our self-interest. Well, O-MAG exists to write checks and we don't like doing it. We like to write few checks and little tiny ones. And so a lot of that starts with you all. You guys are the board of directors of this municipal corporation and except for you, none of the rest of you have ever heard that before. And they didn't tell you that at the election board when you signed up. Well, you heard it last time too. But you're the board of directors of this municipal corporation. Now, if you, when you sit down in your chair, will think, "I'm attending a board of directors meeting," that will focus your thinking on what the manager and staff should bring before you, right? David, we went to County Seat Town one time, didn't we?
Yes.
What time was that meeting supposed to start, David?
Six. It did start at six.
And what, what time did you get to stand up and start talking?
Eleven.
Eleven. Did it make you grumpy?
A little bit, sometimes. Three-hour drive.
Have you remembered it for many years now?
A few.
And if I hadn't brought it up right now, would you have brought it up a little bit off the plate?
That's why you're on the offensive grid at worst.
Get it out of the way. Now, David, what was the thing that really stumped them while we were waiting to get you up there?
County seat city, 15,000 to 20,000 population, and they spent an hour and a half debating which lawn mower to buy for the Parks Department.
Did they pick green paint or orange paint, David? Well, they picked green paint. Nobody wants orange paint if green paint's available for them on. You know that. Did they have a city manager and staff and everything?
Yes.
Everything?
Everything.
Well, okay, made David grumpy a lot.
It was an argument.
I still hear about it from time to time. You guys know the old saying, "What gets measured gets done," until Tom Peters saying, "What gets measured, feedback gets improved." That's our stability test. Hundreds of cities and towns have taken the stability test, probably, oh, close to, what?
Couple thousand.
Couple of thousand, maybe, people by now have taken the stability test. And what gets repeated and reward, what gets repeated and rewarded gets to live again. You guys are the board of directors of this municipal corporation. You've got the same three duties, the same three jobs and the same three resources board of directors Walmart has, or ConocoPhillips, or dare I say, Charles Machine Works, this which, Charles Machine Works. And so you have the duties of care, obedience, and loyalty. The duty of care is, you guys get in the agenda packet, do you make them get electronically or is it printed out?
We did tonight.
I spent all my afternoon touring the railroad depot. I thought, "This is going to be cool. I want to go see what Perry's going to do with that." So I didn't know if you got a printed one or not, but you guys get some kind of an agenda packet. And it's not just the agenda, it's got backup material in it. It'll have memos and quotes and bids and stuff like that, right? So when this part of your lap hits the top part of the chair, the duty of care has been exercised. When you have read all of your agenda material, you call the city manager or the city attorney in advance of the meeting, you ask your questions, and now you are ready to go. Doesn't mean you vote the same way she does. It doesn't mean you think the same thing he does, means you're ready to go. It's pretty simple. But if you don't do that, then you failed the duty of care. Now, let me give you an example about duty of care. I was in a little town over by a river, eastern Oklahoma, and a really, man, sharp-dressed young lady showed up, crook of her arms, she had a bunch of bound books and she handed them out. And then she, she asked everybody to turn to page three, you know, where they can have this disclaimer about, "We're not looking for fraud and stuff," and look at footnote 18, and would you turn to the table on page 27? Any questions about your annual audit? What the mayor should have said is, "I have a question. Nobody's seen it before five minutes ago, so we can't do our exercise of care. What day's convenient next month for you to come back?" So when they show up at the meeting to hand out stuff that you've never seen before, I know present company doesn't do that, but if they do that, you need to thank them profusely for driving all the way to Perry and ask them when is convenient for them to return. Because turning to page three and looking at footnote 18 and turning to table 19, you have no earthly idea about what's contained in there. You will fail your duty of care. Loyalty is the next one. Oh, no, it's not obedience is. What's obedience say? It says, "We'll do whatever the federals, the state makes us do, whatever previous city councils have made us do by ordinance or resolution," until you change them or amend them, which is in your authority to do, not the state law and the federal law. Loyalty means your hat says Perry on it. It doesn't say, "High school football coach thinks," or "Bank trust at the donut shop said," or, let me give you an example of loyalty. I live, y'all didn't know this, I live in the used-to-be-better subdivision of Perry. It used to be better. And I work for living. I'm not like this guy who wears a tie and sits in the air conditioning. I work for living. Friday, I'm grumpy and tired and I drive on a janky road to get into my used-to-be-better subdivision. I call you up every Friday and I'm wearing you out. How come the city won't fix my janky road? Because when they had the budget hearing and the budget workshop, you said, "We're going to spend all of our road money on the road that goes to the grocery store because that's the road that makes the sales tax and that's what we run on." And you're going to call city manager and say, "Please throw some gravel and some coal patch in those potholes." And you're going to stand up and die on the hill that in 25, 26 fiscal year, we will fix that road. But for right now, you're just going to get wore out. Because loyalty means you have to do what was best for the organization, not best for your war. You can advocate for your war and you should. You can block my phone number and not take my calls anymore, that'd be rude, you're a public servant. You have to do what's best for the organization, which may or may not include a railroad depot. We don't know. That's what loyalty means. You have the resources, the time, money, and people. You think your most scarce resource is money. It's not. Your most scarce resource is time. The only time you're board of directors of this municipal corporation are two things are in place. Number one, we have posted an agenda that meets open meeting law, whatever the Supreme Court says this week that means. And number two, we have a quorum. Those two are in place, you're now the board of directors of this municipal corporation. When the mayor gavels you adjourned, you are promoted back to citizen. David, if we were to show a slide that said individual powers, duties, and authorities of individual city council members outside of a meeting, what would the slide say?
It'd be a blank page.
Nothing there?
Nothing.
Zippity-dooda, nothing?
None.
None? The null set, no?
You have no individual power.
Wow. All right. Well, it wasn't me, I didn't say that. David said that. You guys really are supposed to set a strategic direction for the future of the organization by 2034, Perry will go here and do this. You adopt policies that help staff take you to that future state if that's needed and you monitor results. You're now a six-year-old in the backseat. Are we there yet? Are we there yet? You're supposed to monitor results along the way. So it's kind of hard work because it'd be a lot easier to pick up paint color for lawn mowers, but if you take a blank piece of paper and write the future on it, that's a little tough to do. Now, I know the paper's not blank. Perry's been here since they started beating horses to get down from Kansas, but you still have a future to create. 2034 is going to come and you guys are going to do one of two things. You're either going to make circles like the children of Israel did in the desert for 40 years or you're going to go somewhere on purpose. Zigler said, "If you aim at nothing, you hit it every time." And you might not get all the way to 2034 with your plan, but you're going to go somewhere on purpose because 2034 is coming. Here it comes, there it went. Did we do anything in the interim? Did we do anything in the interim? So that's really your job. Everything's a process, plow, plant, water, weed, wait, good Lord gives the increase. Bossa Paul told the Greeks, "Of course, that." Nothing's an event. You come to a ribbon cutting and a picture making, then you are at the end of an event. But the real work is done in the process. A lot of times, the process is dull and boring, doesn't look like much's happening. But everything is going in a direction that you say it should go. Every city and town operates to some degree similar, they all have a board of directors. We can't get anybody to write a business book for cities and towns. So we steal business books from the private sector and we adopt them. Simon Sinek, he's a famous guy, lots of YouTube videos, lots of big books. And Simon Sinek is just like me. I don't know anything new or original. Everything I got is old or stolen or both. And all he did is repackage old stuff and make a lot of money. Makes me a little jealous. I got old stuff I could repackage. Kind of like that Seven Habits guy. He didn't think none of that stuff up on his own, he just repackage that stuff. Made a lot of money. Simon says, "Everybody knows what to do. A lot of folks know how they do it. Very few people know why they do it." And he said, "In the private sector, making a profit is not your why, it's a result." He says, "Almost everybody works from the outside in because the outside is the most concrete. The inside is the least concrete, it's the most ethereal." That's a big word for me to say. What are you guys' what and how and why? Every town has the same two whats. Every town has the same two whats, and this is according to an expert I rely on, his name is Bill Tackenham. So your two whats are to facilitate commerce and to increase public safety. And that just doesn't mean more firemen and policemen. That means potable water, how you treat your sewage, or your surface transportation's adequate, all that kind of stuff. Increase public safety. Why did people clump up thousands of years ago before there were cities? For two reasons, to be safer, right, from other people and animals and stuff. And your second what? The second thing you do is facilitate commerce. And why is that important? Well, because we run off sales tax. I know you guys are an electric city and awash with money, because all electric cities are, but you still rely on sales tax. So when the Walmart folded up, that was kind of, kind of a deal, wasn't it? Yeah. We already got enough people going to Stillwater as it is. So part of that 2034 coming is economic development and that's part of y'all's job. How you do that in this form of government is called council manager form of government. That form of government came about because in the 1880s, the federals, the people that was the deep state back then, it's 2024, we can say deep state, they hated Andrew Jackson. Hated him. And they said, "We're done with patronage. We're not doing that anymore. You don't get a job because of who you know or who you're related to. We're going to have merit and you're going to get a job because you know how to do the job." And Woodrow Wilson was the, one of the prime drivers of that back when he was president of Princeton University. And then, oh, 30 years later, it started creeping into city government and we had our first city council manager form of government, which is supposed to mirror a board of directors and a CEO. Instead of shareholders, we have stakeholders. And you guys don't fix a road because of who voted for who. You fix a road because it's the one that makes the sales tax, so you've got to get that one fixed first. And so that's how you guys do your business, but why does Perry exist? And I'm not talking about the horses played out from Kansas when they finally got here. That's all I want to talk about. Why does your organization exist? Every town in our state has the same why. Create the kind of community that attracts quality individuals who want to live and work and raise their families here. Isn't this all really plain and pedestrian and why am I taking your time with it? Because we don't say it out loud, we don't think about it in those terms, we won't act at those terms. Every town has the same why. Create the kind of community that attracts quality individuals like this young man who had Clark here in Oklahoma, now he's a Okie, not a Yutan, who want to live and work and raise their families here. Not in Stillwater, not in Billings, not in Edith, not in New Kirk, for goodness sake, here, in Perry. And that's the biggest part of your job. That's your why. David, they are tired of hearing from me.
I don't know why. You got them? Good. So we're going to talk about a test and before we get started, I should mention, I hadn't seen Bryce since I saw him in Tulsa last fall when he was getting an award from the City Attorneys Association. So if you don't know, Bryce is one of the founding members of the Municipal Attorneys Association. We have an association that's been around for a long time. It is very active. The attorneys have a lot of resources amongst each other and they do a very good job of sharing that. And Bryce was recognized for his contribution to serving that organization for decades. So one of the few in the state that's been given that award. You probably didn't tell all of you that, did you?
Oh, maybe I did.
Oh.
I think within about 48 hours, so probably you did.
Take back the amount of time you have him speak.
So we're going to, Bill's handed you a score sheet and we're going to talk about taking a test. I'm going to skip through some of the intros and get to what we need to do. I'm going to skip through some of the intros and get to what we need to do. The idea with doing this training and to have a test was mostly mine because I was tired of working for dysfunctional cities. And one of the things we've done over the last 40 years is try to study why some cities are successful and why some cities fail. We should understand that better, shouldn't we? So we've spent decades trying to figure that out. Why do some cities succeed and why do some cities fail? It's an interesting question because we could point out a lot of failures and we can point out some of the successes. And I don't think it's all by accident. I think it's been on purpose. And I think it's by design. Those who are good at what they do succeed. Those who aren't fail. And we have lots of examples and we'll talk about some of them. Bill's going to give you some other handouts and we're going to take a test. And the test was created to help us evaluate how we're doing, for you to take and you to determine, how are we doing in these 10 areas of government so we can see how we measure up and how we think we should be doing. The 10 areas of government were created by a group of experts in the Tulsa area 20 some odd years ago. As Bill mentioned, we've given this around the state to lots of cities. We've been to 150, 200 different cities just like this, from some of the largest in the state to some of the smallest. I think the test is the same. I think the criteria is the same. And no one has yet said, no, I think your test is wrong, those are the wrong categories. So we're going to go through a test and talk about, if I get to the right slide, why we do it. Mine was a very selfish motive. Stable cities are more functional. I've worked for some of the worst cities and the best cities. So I think the idea is we evaluate how we're doing and try to get better. We don't judge why we got here. We don't judge whose fault it is, but we evaluate, how are we doing in these 10 areas? And then ask the question, how do we, what do we do to get better at it? Because you can. A little bit about the stability test, I'll skip through that, I've mentioned it. And the first question's finance. And you're lucky you have a finance guy here. So the first question on the test is financially, how are we doing? We created this question. We relied on some financial experts and asked, what should be a minimal standard that a city should have? And they told us that we should at least have 20% of the general fund as a reserve in case we have a downturn in the economy. And that should be a statewide standard. It's not required by statute. It's not mandatory, but that would be a high score on the test. And we're going to cheat on this one and ask you, what score would you give Perry?
The 20% will be an eight or a nine.
Good. And this is the one question where you get to cheat and rely on the expert. Eight or a nine? You're doing well.
David.
You've been in some cities in which?
I heard 20%. I didn't hear a written policy that requires it.
And a written policy that requires it.
I'll give them a score they don't.
Do you have a written policy? There's not a written policy.
Oh, that knocks the eight and the nine.
And why is that important, Bill?
Well, because sometimes you have new faces around the horseshoe. And sometimes somebody said, I am going to get that water tire painted John Deere green if I have to shoot a bear in the woods.
And this guy says, we got the money in the bank to do it.
And so that's what we're going to do. And if we don't have a written policy, now Nate's going, well, I don't like, I like Cabot Orange, I don't like John Deere Green. So now we've got a fuss amongst ourselves. But now if she shows up and says it's John Deere Green, now it's not on Nate because you guys have a policy by resolution. And now she's got to convince the majority of y'all to start getting some buckets of paint. And she's got a harder control to do. It's harder to break if you have a policy in place, right? Because a policy will outlast you guys' tenure.
We gave this test recently in a city in which a banker was on the city council. And he said, we don't have any policy like this. And I said, what about at your bank? Oh, yeah. Of course, we have monetary policies. Sure, we do it at the bank. Well, why don't you do it at the city? Because your goal as a board of directors, your job as a board of directors is to set financial policy for the city. What do you want it to be? We have a large city in Oklahoma a few years ago set their reserve policy at 2% with the idea they would increase 2% over the next five years and get to 10%. They abandoned it after about two years and said, that's not possible, we can't do it. Some cities do it well. Some have 50%. Some have a written policy of 30 or 40%. Some have written great policies after 100 years of not having one. But that's up to you. You're the board of directors. What financial policy do you expect for the organization going forward? If any? Because you get to decide. Why is it important? Because if you are financially strong, your decisions are easier. Right? You get to make decisions in a vacuum that is much easier than those who are broke because we've given this test and we've had cities answer, one, we're lucky to make payroll. Boy, their decision-making's hard. Go ahead.
Sometimes, David, I've been in the car with him hundreds and thousands of miles. He's a little judgy, I'm just going to tell you. Little judgy. So David went to a town down in the piney woods of southeast Oklahoma one time. He was certain they did not have a reserve or a policy.
Didn't expect it, did we?
Was 100% wrong about that.
First one we saw, wasn't it?
First one.
And we asked, well, where did this come from? It was a great policy. They almost went bankrupt in the 80s and they hired a financial advisor to help them get out of it. And they adopted policy so that it would never happen again. What a good move. And they live by it ever since.
And that was.
Doesn't do any good to adopt one if they don't follow it either.
They followed it for 30 years, haven't they, David?
Yeah.
Maybe you should tell us who that city is so we can follow us.
That was Wilburton.
Plagiarize it.
Wilburton, Oklahoma.
But if you want to look at a really good one, Muskogee, adopted one about three years ago. That's one of the best in the state. There are lots around, we can give you examples. It should be a goal for long term, over the next six months, two years, whatever they can afford. And it doesn't have to be year one, we're going to be at 20%.
It's a process.
It's a process. But as a board of directors, I think you should determine that policy because your job will get easier, won't it?
Yes.
Doing the budget will get easier. This becomes the priority. We're not going to have an argument about spending down to zero or how much we should have left. We are actually going to budget a reserve that is in the budget as a reserve fund.
Everybody thinks this is in case something bad goes wrong, ice storm, FEMA mayor may not help us pick up limbs. It's the same way as when we're sitting at the kitchen table, something goes on sale and we got the money and we might go buy it. Somebody shows up with a new business in town, they'd like a little help, a little economic development, city. Do they do that in Sand Springs?
A little bit. Or a matching ground. Lots of opportunities. It's an opportunity.
Or a depot.
Yeah. Maybe you could stay on the.
That's a relief if you ask the intern.
I'll pass it on to Sam.
Although we don't have a policy, we have operators in that for a lot of years.
Yes. Well, we don't have the written policy piece up. That is our annual discussion at budget time. But you guys adopt a written policy and I'll, I promise, I'll slap the written policy down there as my justification and not just the, from an operating standpoint, we need to be here. So that way I make y'all self-aware and I don't have to go through that part of it. That's question one and it's first because it's the most important. There are a lot of cities in Oklahoma who are broke. They just are. And they live that way. They stay that way. And it's a horrible way to do business. I've had that discussion with a finance director in a city who called and said, we can't pay payroll. What do we do? Well, you don't pay payroll. I refer on the bills. Oh, thanks, you got all the time, you just called. That doesn't usually work out well. But it's a tough discussion to have, to work for a city that's broke. And you don't ever want to be that way. Your legacy is, what are you going to leave this place as when all of your term is up? Right? And we're going to leave it better. And that's a way to leave it better. Question two is, how stable is the governing body? High score is when we have elections, we have good people that want to be a part of it. It's considered an honor to serve on our city council. It's a position of high esteem in our city because we have well-engaged, well-meaning elected officials. That should be our goal. We serve in a position of honesty and dignity and it's an honor to serve here. A low score is we have constant turnover, no one trusts anyone who's here. I look around and I wish we could throw them all out. And we've been in these meetings in which everyone sitting here wrote down a one because they looked around and said, I wish we could throw them all out and start over. And usually, we say, then you guys need to solve your problems. Because until the council does its job well, no one else working for the city can do their job well. And it really is that simple. So you've got to be good at your job. And it should be a good job to have. You've got to find a way to make it enjoyable. You've got to find a way to work well with others. And you've got to find a way to serve well. And if you do that, you'll be successful. And we know in those cities where it's a constant 5-4 vote on every issue on the agenda and there's a lot of argument, you've probably been to a few of those cities. Bryce has been to a few of those cities, they're usually not real successful, are they? So how does a governing body work as a group? Because there's a real simple approach to city government that we don't talk about enough. It's a team sport. If you want to play an individual sport, go fight off or join the legislature. But this is a team sport. Right? And successful cities are successful teams, not successful individuals. And that doesn't mean everyone has to agree, but we have to know how to disagree. And that means we have respect for each other's opinions. We vote and we go on. And it's really that simple. That concept of government, it will work. Whereas we're all at each other's, at odds with each other, we hate each other, we don't have anything to do with each other, that approach won't work. And we see that in some places. So give a score on how you evaluate your governing body. Question three was evaluate our meetings other than this one. High scores, I look forward to them, I enjoy it, we're doing good work for the city. I can't wait until we have another city council meeting because it's a highlight of my work. A low score is they are miserable and I hope I never go to another one. Anyone ever been to a miserable meeting? A few. It's one reason I started doing this training. I got tired of working for cities in which their meetings were miserable. It shouldn't be that way. It shouldn't, it should be a good experience for your employees, for your finance director, for your attorney and clerk, and for each of you. We've got to find a way to make it more enjoyable because what happens if it's not? Good people don't want to be a part of it. You have constant turnover, you don't have stability over time, and you're not successful over time. So evaluate how your meetings are. Give a score of one to 10. The most common question I get is, how long should our meetings last? Goal, I think, should be an hour. Just try to get finished in an hour, most of the time. Just do our business and go home. And in this form of government, that should be easy because you have consent agenda and you have a city manager and you can delegate a lot of authority to deal with administrative things. Your job is to set policy, set long-range goals, and monitor results. And if you do that well, it shouldn't be all-consuming. Your time's valuable. How do you rent your workforce? You're the board of directors for a corporation. It should be a good place to work. That sometimes is missed in city government. But part of your job is to make sure it's a good place to work, even though you have a manager who's in charge of personnel and you're not. You set policy. You set pay and how much you allocate for budget. You determine long-range plans for retirement. You determine benefits in some instances. And you decide whether this is going to be a good place to work or not, including for the ones who report directly to you. So how do you rate your workforce? High score is their employees work hard, care about our city, enjoy their work. It's considered an honor to work for the city of Perry. That should be the goal as a board of directors, right? It can't be you against your employees. It's you for your employees. And a low score is that city that just has constant turnover. No one in their right mind would want to work there, they don't pay well, and they usually have lots of claims. Okay? So how's your workforce? Number five, what does the public think of the city of Perry? Hardest question on the test. We're in an era in which government's not well-trusted, city government included. If you were to talk to those who work in your utility office, they probably are berated by the public every day of the week in some way. So what's the image of the city and what does the public think of us as an institution, as a municipal corporation? It's a hard thing to control, but it's important to understand. A high score, there's a lot of public confidence in what we do. There's a lot of trust in us as an organization. They have a lot of confidence that if something needs to be done in our community, this is the group of people who will make it happen. And a low score is that city in which there's just no public confidence in city government, usually because there's been a scandal, there's been too much turnover, there's been too much controversy. Something's gone wrong. And it's hard to get it back when that happens. Okay? So give a score of what, how your public image is. Number six, how well do we deal with the crisis? Government exists to deal with the disasters that happen. That's when the public does depend on you because they expect to call city hall and say, when are you going to pick up my limbs from that windstorm? So this one is asking, how well-prepared are you for it? High score is, we put thought into it in advance, we know what to do, we come together and work well as a team, and we're prepared. We've allocated the resources and we've given the authority for someone to deal with it. Low score is, we're not ready, we don't know what we would do. And I like to use the example of a big city in Oklahoma that had a broken water line and the city manager didn't have the authority to fix it without having a city council meeting to get the spending authority to fix a broken water line. A big city. Not well-prepared because they didn't think a water line would ever break again. Right? How much thought do we put into being ready if we have a disaster that he's going to have the authority to deal with it? Our spending authority in Sand Springs, if there's a natural disaster and an emergency, is unlimited. Whatever is necessary. Because if that happens, we should be prepared. Now he has to report it to the mayor and city council. The most he's ever spent to deal with a disaster without additional council approvals, a million bucks. But it was a flood. Had to deal with a flood. Kind of needed to get the water plant, sewer plant, working. And maybe we should. Some don't like us doing it that way. I've heard some city attorneys saying, well, you're delegating too much authority. Well, we could have had a meeting and asked, is it okay to fix the sewer plant? Maybe they would have said no. I doubt it. But we have asked since, are you okay with this process? Because we had a broken sewer line that cost over 100 grand to fix on a Friday. Did you want to have a Friday evening or a Saturday morning city council meeting to say, go spend over 100 grand and fix the sewer line? Could have. Mayor said, no, I kind of like the way we do it now. Go fix it. It's fixed by Monday morning. It's fixed by Monday morning. So, being prepared for a disaster is an important part of what we do.
David, don't push that button.
No.
They want to hear some more about this. Isn't this really, follow along with me, you're the witness here.
Agree with everything I say.
Isn't this really the timing of decisions?
Sure.
We're not... we're not losing any authority around the horseshoe, you're deciding when you're going to make decisions, right?
Exactly. And should do it when you're in a back... in a situation where it's easy to make it. And how many mistakes do you get on misspending on an emergency?
Oh, I never make mistakes.
You get one. That would probably be your last, right? I mean, I don't know city managers who would sit around and say, boy, I think I'll push it on that emergency. I think I'll take advantage of that. Right? That doesn't happen.
Well, you know, the policy that David has glossed over in Sand Springs is that the Sand Springs sewer plant sits on the Arkansas River, which sits below the Keystone Dam, which holds back the Keystone Lake. And as Mike Nunley used to say, only God can make it rain, and only the Corps can make it flood. So, they know every three years or so, the sewer plant's going to go all the way underwater. But way back here, they decided, a policy decision is we'll treat poo before we put it back in the river. They already made that decision. Then they decided, we're going to treat poo mechanically, not with lagoons. They already made that decision. So, they already made all the decisions related to the sewer plant. Now, the administrator has to do is fix it when it goes underwater. Right? So, it doesn't... sometimes we get some pushback about, well, you're taking stuff away from us to do. No, we're trying to clear your palate of administrative nonsense, so that you have your time freed up, your most scarce resources, not money or people, it's time. So, you can do things about what's 2034 going to look like in Perry, not should we fix the sewer plant or not. You already decided that way back here, decades ago. Right? So, it's the timing of decisions, right David?
Exactly.
You're a good witness, so you agreed with me all the way.
Number seven, economic development. How are we doing? High score is, we're continuously involved in economic development projects, we think that's a part of what we should do as an organization. We're actively engaged, and we're active in pursuing things, and we think we can make progress. A low score is those... is that city that's opted out of it and said, that's none of our business, we're going to leave it entirely to the private sector, and that's your choice. You get to decide. Now, we had a very important event last Friday in eastern Oklahoma. Anyone know what it was? Outlet Mall opened in Jinks. And why is that important? Because Jinks decided 10 years ago they wanted an outlet mall, and they had spent 10 years getting it. Their pre... they'd been... previous city manager started that project. 10 years they've been working on this economic development project, and it's the only one open in Oklahoma this year, only one in this part of the country. And it didn't happen by accident. It happened because a group of elected officials worked with their staff, identified some land, and actively pursued it for 10 years. It's the same reason there's an aquarium in Jinks. 30 years ago, a group of elected officials said, we should build an aquarium in this part of the country, because it'll bring tourists to Jinks. They made that decision, they spent years pursuing it, and it finally happened. And it's been a huge success because of what they've done. And they did the same thing on financial reserves and finances, and they did the same thing in stability and management, and they did the same thing in lots of things they did. And I mentioned, we can identify some failing cities and successful cities. And I would say Jinks is the most successful city in Oklahoma in the last 30 years, 40 years. Because 40 years ago, they were 5,000 population, they're now almost 30. 40 years ago, they were broke. You look at their audits, you'll see their unrestricted net balance is about 50 million. Their carryover money is tremendous. And that's without an outlet mall. Their per capita sales tax is low, they're surrounded, completely landlocked, they don't have a Walmart, they're not a Walmart city, they have Walmart grocery, but not a Walmart. Yet, they're extremely successful financially, and they did that because they set some goals as council, they were stable in management, they worked well as a team, they set good long-range goals, they let a manager run day-to-day operations, and they stayed out of it, and they knew what they wanted to be. And if you were to talk to their mayor from back in that time, he would say, we knew we had to keep up with the football team. And that was his... their goal. School was extremely successful, the city was an afterthought. Some of you probably don't... haven't heard the story, but there's a story of Earl Roberts at one point said, I would have put my university over across the river, but who would want to be in a town named Jinks? Actually said that, and located it in South Tulsa. But anyway, a story of tremendous success because they decided what they wanted to do on economic development and went out and did it. Now, there's also the point, none of it is easy, sometimes it takes a long time. It always takes everyone being on the same page and working toward it and sticking with it. And they're a testament to that. Sometimes these things are not easy.
You know, a third of Jinks lays in a floodplain. It's on the river, surrounded by Tulsa, always has been. They have continuity of leadership. They're the same city manager, get ready, 33 years. He looked like you when he started. He looked like David when he got done. He's still alive, he's the mad scientist.
Yeah, I had breakfast with him a couple days ago, because he was... told me, we should go to breakfast, and he could celebrate his role in the outlet mall, because he had a big part of it. He's been retired five years, probably.
David, you didn't tell them the secret sauce to economic development, is that called owning land?
I think so, but everyone does it differently. Sand Springs, I spend more than half my time as city attorney working on economic development projects, we own a lot of land, we sell a lot of land. Bill likes to quote Mike Nunley, and Mike used to say, economic development moves at the speed of greed. And if you have developers and landowners in the middle of it for the city, it's a whole lot harder. So, we took out the middle land. We buy and sell lots of land.
How did you bankroll your latest deal in Sand Springs?
We did a $6 million economic development general obligation bond. The voters had to approve it, it passed 70 or 80 percent, and we bought $6 million worth of land.
You didn't set on that money, you went out and spent it?
Within months of getting the money, we spent every penny. Now, it has a Chick-fil-A on it, Olive Garden was announced a month ago, it's being built now. City's the seller. And in working with both of those for a couple of years on each, I don't know how we could have ever had any role in it if we were not the landowner, because we control the utilities, we control the building permit process, they need our involvement somehow, anyway. So, we just have a very active role in economic development. Some cities don't want to do that. Some have outside economic development authorities, and that's fine, I don't know what you have. Some have lots of different ways of doing with... dealing with it. But, it's your book of choice. How active you want to be and how much you want to do is up to you.
David, 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 Sand Springs is a big old honking town and everything, on the river and all that. What about a little town like Manford? They couldn't do anything like that.
Same thing. Mike Nunley, city manager there, died five years ago. He really is the one who started this approach to economic development for cities. He taught a class and... taught a class at OML on it, and if you were to drive to Broken Bow today and ask Vicky Patterson, the city manager, what have they done to revitalize their downtown? They bought every vacant building they could buy. The dilapidated ones they tore down, city bought them. And she would say, the reason they did all that, is she sat in the back of the class at OML and heard Mike Nunley speak, and never met him. But she went back home to Broken Bow and said, city council, what do you think about trying this? Tremendous downtown development in Broken Bow from her. And hopefully, she's speaking at OML conference.
She's supposed to be speaking there.
About how to revitalize the downtown, because when we were asked by OML, who should teach a class like that? She's the best.
She is.
Now, David... Vicky Patterson, Broken Bow, and if you need someone to talk to, how do we do these things? Call her. She's the most gracious, helpful person out there.
Now, she... Vicky started her municipal career at the little shack that you drive over the weigh scale, and she puts down your ton each at the dump.
Now been city manager 12 years.
She's city manager of the year last year.
Does she look like you?
Not yet.
No, she looks young.
So, David, all of this is about businesses. What about rooftops? Any words of wisdom for rooftops?
Same thing. We... Yeah, we hear lots of times, boy, we're just not getting the growth, we don't have any housing. Sand Springs, we're building a city subdivision. City is. City bought the land from a bank, it was in... been in foreclosure, been vacant for a long time, 65-acre development. We're in the business of building roads and utilities. Why wouldn't we build roads and utilities and sell off lots? We contracted with a home builder out of Abosso, Capital Homes, who built subdivisions, served as our consultant, told us how to do this. So, we're building a subdivision, it'll have 112, 115 lots, we'll sell lots, want to build houses, we'll sell lots, but they'll have roads and utilities.
Any other town...
Hopefully, it makes money.
Any other town did this?
Manford did some of that.
Manford did it?
Altus is doing some of that with Gary Jones, I think they're doing a residential subdivision, and City's doing.
What about on a smaller scale, like if we were in Slaughterville?
Slaughterville's a great example. Anyone ever been to Slaughterville? Just south of Norman?
It's a scary sounding place, isn't it?
You know, we were there for this training, and we learn something every place we go. The county administrator said, here's what we do for housing. They budget money for the county administrator to go to the county tax sale, and they buy vacant properties. They give her the authority in advance, they give her the spending authority, she shows up at the sale, they buy vacant lots or dilapidated houses, city tears them down, then they sell the lots and get new houses built. They've done that for years in Slaughterville, Oklahoma. She created it on her own, great story to tell us about it. And she would say, they made money doing it, never lost a penny. Just a simple, creative way to get new housing. And I don't know if you have a housing, lots of places we go, everyone says, boy, I wish we could get more housing starts. That was their way of doing it.
Well, and you know, the little cherry on top of the sundae is, most of the people that don't pay their taxes also don't pay the liens for weed and grass abatement.
Yeah.
So, now you've got another bite at the apple to get your money back, plus a new house. A lot of it's infill, so the utilities, the streets are already there.
Lots of creative things you can do on economic development. Part eight is what we've been talking about with the council's role, planning and goal setting, some cities do it well. High score is, the elected officials, administration staff, work well together, they set a goal for the city, and know what direction you want to go. Low score is, we haven't gotten around to that yet. We see a lot of cities that spend a lot of time talking about which lawnmower to buy, and not a whole lot about what they want their city to be. And that is your job, it's more important. We see cities in which the elected officials are afraid to give much spending authority to the manager, because they want to keep control. What they're really saying is, we want to be involved in which vehicle you buy, we want to deal with things that are easy and familiar, rather than the hard issues. Your jobs are more important than that. The public is trusting, put a lot of trust in you to set goals for your organization and decide what your city should be. That's more important than the day-to-day operations. The hard work is the day-to-day operations. And really, the more you stay out of that, and the more you focus on planning and goal-setting for your organization, you'll accomplish some of those.
David, we've heard the...
Some do it well.
We've heard the name Mike Nunley.
Yeah.
Tell me how Mike Nunley bought cop cars.
What do you mean?
They would authorize money to be spent in the budget.
Oh.
To get a couple of cop cars at the budget workshop and the budget adoption. Then what happened?
When he found the right deal and thought it was appropriate, he would buy it. It didn't go back to council.
Really?
No need.
Because they already said, when they got to the budget, they already said, go buy two cop cars?
Budget resolution gives them the authority to buy vehicles if it's budgeted.
And it sucks all the fun out of being an elected person, David. Here's what you should do, you should get permission to go to bid, and then you should open bids at the meeting, and you should evaluate the bids at the meeting, then you should award the bids at the meeting, and if it's still the current fiscal year, you should buy the car at the meeting.
And you left out the argument about whether, why aren't we buying a Dodge or a Ford or a Chevy?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Then you should hire a new city manager.
So, you're saying that when Mike Nunley worked through a budget with the town of Manford, and they said, here's enough money to buy two cop cars, he didn't go back and ask them five more times if they were sure they wanted him to buy two more cop cars?
Zero. Between him and the police chief at that point.
Wow, that's dope. Just one time. Kind of like if mom said I could go to the movie, I didn't keep asking until she said no. Is that what we're talking about? What does that do? Does that free up more of their time to talk about the future and planning and goal-setting?
And it's the same process in Sand Springs, and you know, I'm always sensitive to the criticism, boy, you've taken away all their authority. But we talked with the council about this, and I'll give you a better example. We built a $10 million police station in Sand Springs. Do you know how many times it was on the agenda for council vote? Once. We do project resolutions for any construction project, we do a resolution, sets the budget, delegates the authority to bid, enter into contracts, and all the way through final acceptance. It's on the agenda once, for a vote. So, the city manager in Sand Springs could spend $10 million to build a police station. And as a part of that resolution, he had to give regular reports of the status, and he did that. And we get to the end of the process, and we... they have a ribbon cutting, and the council's happy, and it's finished, and we talk about it at our next council meeting, are you okay with this process? Because you gave $10 million in spending authority. This is not a secret process, it's with their approval. And they said, well, of course, we don't want to take out the tile, we didn't want to be bothered, we're volunteers, we don't get paid for this. We hired you to go build a police station, and by the way, it turned out great, we're happy with it. That's their job. They set the budget, they decided how much to spend, they were involved in where it was located. When they did the resolution, they had a concept of the design. But staff's job is to do the work, and theirs is to set the policy. So, we do project resolutions, I had a city employee there tell me it's the single most important change we've made in city government during their 30 years of working there. If we're doing a sewer line project, we do a project resolution, sets the budget, gives the authority to contract, it bid it, everything in one place, and if it goes over budget, it has to come back to council. That's the limitation, you can't spend more than what you've been given. So, I think it's a good process that shortens meetings, keeps you focused on what your job is, holds the staff accountable to do their job, and do it the right way. And a tough concept for some cities to accept, just this.
David, of course, a town of 25,000 can do that, a smaller town couldn't do that.
Others do it the same way, Manford does it the same way.
What'd Manford build?
City Hall also.
Really? Brand new?
City Hall, police and fire. Opened, I don't know if anyone's been through there, opened six months ago. Anyway, it's just a good way in setting goals for your city. Number nine, administration, how stable is management of your city? I know you're new, but we know that from the private sector, that stability in upper management is important for long-range success, and that's part of the Jinks model, it's been true in some cities. We could point out some cities that have failed, we've been in a city that had eight city managers in two years. Now, they worked real hard to do that, and they did it well. Every three months or so... Every three months or so, they would change city managers. I don't think they enjoyed it very much, but eight in two years. Not a whole lot else gets accomplished if you're going through that process. You probably know the time that was involved in hiring a city manager, it's kind of time-consuming. Eight in two years, and we've seen other cities that have been similar. High score is, we're stable in management, we attract and retain good people, it's considered a good place to work, this is not just about city manager, it's upper management of the city. Your duty as a part of the board of directors of the city is to make sure upper management wants to be here. It's a job that is attractive to upper management, whether that be the police chief, the fire chief, all of those should be good jobs that are stable over time, because you will be more successful if they are. Low score is just the constant turnover city. And question 10 is, how well do we communicate as an organization? Because failure to provide information and get the information out amongst both internal and external is the root of a lot of problems that we see. A high score is, you're getting the information, you need to make decisions. Low score is, I wish I knew what was going on around here. And we see that problem in some cities. We'll collect your answer sheets, we'll get a collective score back to Nate, and you can see where you scored high and where you didn't. And we hope that you will take it seriously, and we'll say, when you get the results back, boy, we scored lowest in X, how do we get better? What do we do to improve it? Because there are ways to improve every one of these. We see very few cities that score over 90, but there are some. We have been in a city that scored an 11, city manager city that is larger than this. They evaluated themselves at an 11 out of 100. And they had to work hard to get there, but they did. And they choose to say that way. Because when we ask them if they can get better, they say, well, thanks, but no, we've got more arguing to do amongst ourselves. When we've taken surveys and asked, what's the single most important thing you can do to make your city better? The overwhelming answer is, find a way to work as a team. Because if you do that, you will be successful, if you don't, you will fail. It's really simple. So, we encourage you to find a way to do that. If you have questions, Bill will be glad to try to answer any of them. No, any questions? We, uh, I know a lot of you are new and, and probably new to city government. It's probably different than what you expected. I know, uh, these days, it's a lot harder. I, I feel for you. You know, we're going to have, one of the things that we as staff, and I'm sure Bryce has stayed away from this topic. I know I have my entire career. But we're going to have a class at the OML conference on the politics of serving on city council. And Christian, the attorney at OML, and I are going to moderate that, which means we get to ask hard questions. And we're going to have some mayors and city managers as a part of the panel. Your job is much harder. The politics of what they do is harder than it's ever been. And we usually say, "That's none of our business. Don't we?" We don't teach that part of it. We've ignored it, but, but we're kind of at a critical area. It's harder for you now than it's ever been.
David, we did not give enough attention, to their surprise, to planning and goal-setting. How does Sand Springs do planning and goal-setting?
We have a quarterly lunch. So four times a year, we have a lunch meeting in which we talk about long-range plans and goals for the city. Usually it includes some training component, and it includes one of these stability test topics, whether it's economic development, finance, employee benefits. We take one of those 10 topics usually. Sometimes it's something different. We've had, for example, ambulance. I know that's a bigger issue in western Oklahoma, but IMSA is a little bit different. So they've gone out for bids for ambulance in Sand Springs. So we have one of those workshops, long-range ambulance needs, and how we're going to deal, deal with it and what to do about it. So we, we try to have that type of discussion. It's an 11:30 till 1:00 meeting. Lunch is provided. And we talk about long-range planning and don't vote on anything. If something comes out, it gets voted on in a regular meeting. And it's a good way for council to, to express where they want to go with things. Because it's hard to do in regular agenda items. Hard to focus on that. Questions from many of you? Ask away. Bill will answer.
Well, I'd just like to make a statement. Of course, I don't have certain to say, but he knows that I've been around covering city councils many, many, probably over 20 years. Worked at the newspaper 49 years, so I watch others cover it too. I believe that for the first time in a long time, Perry has one of the best working councils that are truly, um, going forward. And it makes me really proud to just be part of them and watch what they're doing. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart.
Well, good.
And, um, I know there's a couple that I don't know that well. Some of them I've known since they were born. But, um, it, it just really, really makes me proud to be part of this council, I think.
Well, I hope they all have the same perception that you need to carry on that legacy. Because it's an important role, isn't it?
It is.
And someone needs to pick that up and keep it. And somebody's got to be the keeper of the culture that we're going to operate this way and we're going to, long-term, function this way. You know, I, I mentioned I've worked for some bad city governments. Manford was a train wreck when I started. It was the worst operating city in the history of Oklahoma. I'm convinced. Meetings were miserable. Everything about it was horrible. Sand Springs was the opposite. It was great when I started there, and it still is. And why is that? Because they have a lot to believe in the culture of how it should operate. And we had council members who taught other council members, "You've got to have respect for those who serve with you. And if you do that, you can be successful. And the minute you don't respect their vote, your vote will become worthless." And they taught that forever.
Well, that's why all these kids respect me, and I'm old enough to be their grandmother.
But it's still the valuable lesson, though, isn't it?
It is. And they tell me they appreciate my perspective. And even I know at film school that they listen.
Well, good.
I appreciate that.
Other questions or comments? Criticisms of Bill?
I thought you said the meetings were supposed to be an hour.
They were, except this one.
Yeah, if you have a special guest, it can go longer.
No, let's do criticisms of you, Bill.
Yeah, if you're here more than an hour, you're being held against your will. You need pizza. And you need a police escort. You've been held against your will. Well, you guys have been gracious with your time. And, uh, pretty much the same thing you heard the time before.
I think it was a little different. I didn't remember the test.
I, I remember the test now, yeah. Because the last time, the test was not good.
Yeah, uh, yeah, it was. And I was probably, I mean, I was probably a little more harsh than them, just, just because we are pretty new at some points and stuff. But I think if you have to your point, better than once.
Have you guys spent any time? Oh, go ahead, sir.
Uh, just when, when you're doing that vision planning or even the update, quarterly updates, who, does, does the mayor or the city manager facilitate that luncheon or meeting? Or who facilitates that? I, I think it's different every place. In Sand Springs, the city manager does, but the mayor and council has an act, obviously, active role in it. There's not a battle of who should be in charge there. It really is a team approach. So there's, there's no dispute over how, how it should be done. But, uh, city manager works with the mayor, who, who knows what the agenda's going to be, what the topic's going to be, and, and works well. I, I think that concept of teamwork amongst the group is probably the one thing we achieved there or that they had there for years that's just sustained itself because they've worked hard at keeping it that way. Doesn't mean we don't have problems. But if there are council issues, it's up to council to solve them. It's not up to the city manager or the city attorney or the city clerk to solve problems amongst yourselves. That's up to the group of you. And when, when it starts becoming his problem, he can't fix it. If you're, if you're misbehaving amongst the group, Bryce can't fix it. I can't fix it. City manager can't fix it. Now, you can draw them all into it, and then it gets worse, right? Because they become the ones who are at fault then. We see that over and over. Council's got to, got to work through its own working relationship and its own problems and set its own standards and live up to those and monitor and regulate how you act amongst yourselves. That's your responsibility. That is a part of your job, not theirs. Some cities do that well and don't have problems because it's a culture that's evolved and worked well that way. Some don't. It's harder these days. Because we have some who get elected who don't want that. They want to, they get elected to disrupt. But if that's the case, it's up to you to deal with it.
I think that's what you're hitting on, but it's, it's one of those things where we all get along tonight and get along pretty well, for the most part. But there should be things where we don't, that we do disagree on. But after the decision's made, we all need to go that same direction.
Yeah, exactly.
As a team again.
You know, the best example I can give of that is in Sand Springs, we had a longtime mayor, he's still on council, Mike Burge. And, uh, there was a time, 15 years ago, he'd been mayor a while. He was on the agenda to elect a new mayor. They, they vote amongst their seven to elect a mayor. Four-three vote, he's voted out as mayor. And a new guy, first meeting on council, is elected mayor. And four-three vote, he's elected vice mayor. And the next meeting, you were, you would have thought they were brothers, he and the mayor. There is no, "Boy, I, I deserve that." It's, "Oh, well, I respect their vote. I'm going to accept it." We go on. We know how to disagree. He became mayor again later. He would have never become mayor again later, later if he had behaved and handled it the right way. But that's, that's up to the group of you. You're going to get outvoted. Otherwise, we just have one, right? There's room for this difference of opinion, and there's nothing wrong with that.
I think our strong leadership is that we have a new mayor that's only lived in very eight years. We have a boss mayor that's been here his whole life. So with his history and his knowledge, he'll come with the council. He brings some, uh, respect to it. And he brings new vision, new blood, new things, and they really work well together.
Good.
Um, I think, though, what I see in Perry is that we're flipping. It used to be an older group of people, and now it's becoming younger, and they're more adaptive to change.
Yeah. Well, one of your, one of your most enduring things that you guys will do is create a culture that's hard to break. And so you, you, you can be here tonight and you all kind of get along with each other, kind of like each other. But the resolutions that you put in place, like the 20% reserve, the things that you can do by resolution that make it harder to break what you're trying to do. Because really, when your time is up and, and somebody else sits in your chair, the last thing you want to see is years of work unraveled in a very short period of time. Tomorrow night, uh, in less than 24 hours, I will be in front of a city council. Uh, they have fired their manager. The mayor and the vice mayor resigned. They only have three people left. Two of them are brand new.
Yes.
And that town is in a lot of trouble. Don't take for granted what you have around the horse sheet. Because it, it, when it goes south, it picks up speed till it hits something at the bottom. And I'm not going to have the kind of evening tomorrow night that we've had tonight. All of these top-shelf jokes or, you put in the pocket. We're just going to do business tomorrow night. It's not going to be great. And you know what? When you get in the ditch, it's a long time to get back up on the highway and back up to highway speed. A long time. You guys need to cast that vision for the future. You need to tell, make sure the public knows what that vision is. You need to work towards that big vision. You've got I-35 out here. You've got new dealerships, uh, since the first time we were here. There's, you know, Edmund's full. It's coming to Guthrie. And Jones is coming that way. And you guys are in a great position to grow. But you got it, you got it. Let's, let's cast that big vision. Let's let everybody in town know about it and get excited about it and work towards that big thing. And we appreciate you all having us back out. And Bryce, thanks for asking us. And Nate, congratulations.
I, I would note that there is a manual that, that you put together.
A council handbook.
Yeah. And, uh, and then we adopted that a number of years ago. So let's make sure that everyone here gets a, I don't know if you have it. Let's make sure everybody gets a copy of it. I, of course, have it on my, on, on my deal. But let me send that tomorrow to Nate, and we'll send that back out. But it's.
It was designed, we do, we do it, council, we recommend a council handbook. They're on the OMAC website. We, we put these together maybe 10 years ago. We encourage cities to have them. The one I have in Sand Springs now is this thick. Council reviews it annually. But it is the handbook, and, and it was written with a real simple idea. It is unfair for someone new to get appointed or elected to a governing body and not know what their job is. So in Sand Springs, we took the approach, "We're going to give you a handbook when you get elected or appointed that tells you everything you need to know about our city." It's going to have a copy of the charter. It's going to have the important resolutions that have been voted on before. It's going to have a section on finance. It's going to explain city government in one document. So we put a lot of those on, uh, on the OMAC website. We encourage cities to have one. You did one a few years ago, but I would encourage you to use it and review it every year and think of it as your way to pass on the culture to the next generation by making it a living document that you constantly update. So I, I'm glad you have one. Just find a way to use it well. Some do it well.
The only thing you're missing is how to understand Russ and Eze.
Oh, that's why you need a written section on finance. Because, uh, if we could ever figure out.
Watch your head.
I paid a lot of attention to his financial report because I think it's the biggest failure around the state is that there is no standard of what you report on monthly. And we go to cities in which, uh, it's everything from 300 pages, and you need to have a master's in accounting to understand it. That's what some cities get monthly, to the one written on a big chief tablet and crayon that we saw in one city. Here's your monthly financial report.
Was it a red crayon?
Uh, yes. So, so no, you're forced to have a good financial report that helps you understand the finances of the city because I don't know how you make decisions. I, that issue's come up a lot during budget this year of cities that just have no idea what they can afford to do or not do. So handbook would help with that. Thanks for having us.
Thank you, Idris.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Not 10. So we will be skipping over I have a 10. Here you go. I'm 11 and need new business. Real quick, I, I got an email from Marvin Dement earlier today that for Rotary, um, on September 16th, Lieutenant Governor Matt Pennell's going to be speaking at our Rotary here in Perry. And so I wanted to make sure that, I forgot to mention it earlier, that, uh, the council is invited. They're inviting, um, all of our elected officials. So if anybody would like to attend that, um, September 16th.
If you've never met him or heard him, you need to go.
Yeah.
You really need to go.
That is September 16th at the Rotary meeting. That's at noon. They usually meet at the country club, but I am guessing that they may have to move it.
What date is that?
September 16th. Yep, at noon. Typically, they meet at the country club. I'm guessing they will have to move it because they're also inviting Lions Club, and they're inviting a bunch of people. So he said that, "I anticipate a large crowd requesting RSVP from reporting guests." So we make sure that everyone gets their lunch. Um, he will discuss his tourism efforts, including, I presume, the 2028 Olympic events that will be held in Oklahoma City. So you can respond to Marvin or to Jessica and the board over at First Bank about reserving your spot for that. So that he's asked for, for us to attend that. And if we can, I suppose, let, you, you could probably let Christie or Nate know as well. That way, we'll know if we have quorum, we could, we could post that if all of us are going or more than four of us.
Anyone planning on attending by razor hand?
I'll be, I'll be there. Okay, so post it. Yeah, just post it. Yeah. Right, yeah, as soon as we find out. And I'm sure Marvin, the Rotary club, will let everybody know once they start getting those numbers of how many people. But I can't imagine that they're going to have it at the country club with how many people will probably come out to it, including providing lunch for everybody. Right, the training center, the event center, yeah. Okay, so any other new business? See you then. Okay. Item 12, consider convening into executive session to confer on a matter pertaining to the economic development of the city of Perry and to create a proposal and entice a business to construct affordable residential dwelling units in the city of Perry. I call the disclosure of the matter discussed would interfere with the development of the proposal and violate the confidentiality of the business.
Somebody, second.
Christie, when you're ready.
Copy.
Yes.
Bloods of.
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
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 Okay, welcome back. Motion to re-
Roll call?
Yes.
Bloodso?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Well, I knew this boy had a new Williams.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes.
All right, item fourteen, take any action deemed necessary pursuant to the executive session,
including but not limited to directing staff regarding the creation of the proposal and any necessary related matter or approval of the economic development agreement.
With these, with the sidewalk ordinance, reference, reference the sidewalk ordinance.
That's good.
Who said that?
I'm saying it was a question. She was questioning.
That's the first part of that.
Okay. And coffee?
I'll throw you off.
Yep. And Bloodso?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes.
All right, let's call our meeting to order for the periminiscule authority in 2024.
Roll call.
Coffee?
Here.
Bloodso?
Here.
Marshall?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Cold Iron?
Brother.
Rob?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
He's saying here for like the next couple. We've got core item one, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Coffee?
Yes.
Bloodso?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes. All right, item five, consider approval of the economic development agreement, including the proposal discussed in the executive session for new single-family residential lots. Let me say with reference.
Can I do a so moved on that? Uh, reference. Motion to approve with reference to the sidewalk ordinance.
Okay. Question in a couple seconds.
And coffee?
Obstand.
Bloodso?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes.
And coffee?
Yes.
Bloodso?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Worthy?
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 Yes.
Item one, consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, coffee?
Yes.
Bloodso?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Worthy?
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 Yes.